I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have a moment of silence and please remember the Babbitt family. We've lost a past board member over the past month, Marcy Babbitt. We could please remember our family. Please rise from the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, the Record, the Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision in Warwick, and West Milford PV 77. Hosted in the Administration Building, copies of the Board Meeting Calendar Resolution are provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco.
This is Romeo.
Here.
This is Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Conklin.
Here.
This is Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Greenough.
Here.
This is O'Brien.
Mrs. O'Brien has to be excused tonight.
This is Lockwood.
Yeah.
Mr. Stillman.
Here.
This is Van Dyke.
Here.
Thank you, Hannah.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our February meeting. We have a kindergarten registration for September. To date, it's 148 students, so it's looking like it'll be right around 200 by the time Labor Day rolls around. Broken down by school, Appschu has 29. Maple Road, 25. Marshall Hill, 30. Paradise Knoll, 21. Upper Greenwood Lake, 16. And Westbrook, 27. All right. Next up, we have our semi-annual HIV/ITP training and program information reporting. This is for period one, which is July 1 through December 31st. So we report out how many HIBs, how many trainings, how many programs we have by school. All this gets uploaded to the department website. We report out here after the time period ends. We'll do this again right around July or August for the January to June period number two. So for Appschu, for the first six months of the school year, we had zero HIBs in that school. Maple Road, we had one investigation. It was affirmed as a HIB. Marshall Hill, Marshall Hill was zero. Paradise Knoll was zero. Upper Greenwood Lake was one investigation. It was affirmed as a HIB. Westbrook was zero. Mackman had six investigations. Four were HIV, two were unfounded. And at West Mover High School, there were two investigations. One was unfounded, one was HIV. So that's 10 dish for the total, 10 total investigations for the district. Seven were HIV, three were not. Our school trainings for the last six months, we had 28 separate school trainings. Our total school programs were 41. For the past six months, we had 41 separate programs. And we had two district-wide trainings during that time period. Next is a strategic planning update. As you know, we approved our five-year strategic plan. We are meeting with our, our staff, in particular administrators, to discuss action plans and goals for those, for the next five years. We will, we will have something for the March meeting to present to the board, to the community. So we're just about ready to refine those goals and objectives for the next five years. Word of thanks to the Rotary Club. We have their Dictionary Project donation for this year. So this is something that the Rotary Club of West Milford does every year. Their goal is to get a hard copy dictionary into the hands of every third-grade student in America, but in particular in West Milford. So they did this last month. There was a $756 donation to the Dictionary Project. And they sent the dictionaries over, so they were distributed to our, our students in third grade at all six schools. Our student representative, Miss Weiss is absent. Would you have you fill in though? Kate?
Yeah, it's fair. Hi, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Our junior and senior proms were announced this week. Junior prom is set for March 25th at Casa Bianca. And our senior prom is being held at The Tides on June 2nd. It was just announced that we will be holding a traditional graduation for our seniors this year on June 24th. And the Spring Musical of Anastasia will be held March 10th into the 13th. We are so excited to see the show, as the last Spring Musical two years ago was cut short because of COVID. Our students have been working extremely hard after school and is going to be a great performance. It was a championship weekend for the Highlanders. Ice hockey, Bronze Cup champs, Ben Marchado and Colin Munir, District Three Wrestling Champions. Santa Cristi, State Sectional Champ in Shotfoot. And for a first-time-ever dance team made finals for both of their dances and placed seventh and 19th in national. The Student Council is working hard on the volleyball tournament for March 7th at the high school gym at 6:00 PM. At this event, we are raising money for our town's Special Olympics team. We had students sign up to be on teams and we will compete against each other while supporting a local organization. That is all I have for today. Thank you again for allowing me to.
Thank you very much. And lastly, did not make my superintendent's report, but Friday afternoon, we received a message from the department that they are pushing the budget calendar back by one week. So we will begin our state aid numbers one week later than normal. So we had hoped to have a preliminary budget hearing on March 15th. It's now going to be no board meeting on March 15th, but there will be a board meeting on March 22nd, one week later. So we'll get information out, we'll notice it in normal ways, but just for everybody to mark down your calendar, our preliminary budget will be March 22nd. All right, no change to the public hearing at this time, which will be in late April.
Removing the committee meeting to committee meetings to March 15th. So then there will be no meetings on March 8th. Correct?
That is correct. All right, that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Hannah.
I have a question. Alex, these are the, they were training, training, separate school trainings in two district-wide training.
I'm sorry about that. Could you comment more about the two district-wide trainings? Like what they were, where were they, were they online, who gave them?
So these are, one of them is our new hires HIV training. That was August 31st. It's, it's one day here, but it probably wasn't a full day. It was a couple hours. And then our anti-bullying specialist, their start-of-year meetings at each school, that is also, or for the district rather, that's also one day, September 2nd. So one catches all the new staff, one catches every, all the rest of the staff.
And who does those trainings?
The anti-bullying specialist, that would be Mr. Rowe.
Thank you.
You said the kindergarten enrollment, you expected to be 200. Do you know what last year's was?
This year is right around 200, 201 maybe.
Last year was 200.
Last year, meaning the current kindergarten.
Right, right, right.
Right, yeah, so I think we're 201. Should be on our, your enrollment report that we sent out.
Yeah, okay.
Right around 201.
Okay.
Exactly where we were on this date, it's hard to say. We don't really track exactly.
No, 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 I was just curious.
I think 200 is a reasonable estimate.
Mr. Novak.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of announcements and just a couple of things to talk about. The first one I want to talk about is the Dan and Zermatt Graduation Deficiency Assessment, which will be, you know, if you hear us talking about the new NJGPA, that is the new graduation requirement that is in place for, for our high school students. It's been a bit of a, I guess, strange five-year period in terms of what type of assessments met graduation requirements for our students. So now we have a consistent answer from the state, hopefully, hopefully going forward. I'm just going to read a brief blurb from the department broadcast. So on September 18th, 2021, the State Board of Education adopted graduation assessment requirements for the classes of 2023, 2024, and 2025. New regulations comply with the state statute and establish one pathway for graduation. On February 2nd, the State Board of Education adopted the recommended graduation cut scores of 750, 750 for both the ELA and mathematics component. So this is an update for all those classes between 2023 and 2025. So we, what we do know is that it is a, both for ELA and math, each section could be up to 90 minutes. They are based on, for English Language Arts, it's based on Grade 10 New Jersey Student Learning Standards. And for mathematics, it's based on Algebra I and Geometry, New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So we will be administering this test in the spring. And Dr. Matlos and our administrative team guidance everyone involved in the testing process are in the process of putting this in place. And we'll have more, more information as we go. We're also working on updates to our website where parents can link and access testing practice materials, you know, with some sample, sample questions and that sort of thing. Also a good opportunity for me to, once again, thank you all for supporting the Lincoln Platform, because this directly prepares us for that with the benchmarks that we give our students three times a year in the standards that I just referenced. Our ELA kids take benchmark assessments in, in Grade 10 New Jersey Student Learning Standards for ELA. And they also do that, the same assessment for Algebra I and Geometry. So our kids are in the practice of it, or they practice it three times a year. So hopefully that translates to a better, maybe more consistent performance on the new NJGPI. I also wanted to, this is off the, off the agenda. I just wanted to comment on, there's a hand carry that came across tonight. I know there's going to be some, some people have some questions on it. Already, since the hand carry came out, I've heard some questions from community members about it. So I just wanted to comment publicly on, on exactly what it is. So the current situation we have, we have a vacated high school teaching position that covers, is covering courses in chemistry and biology that are also lab periods. The posting has been out since that, since we were aware of that, that teacher's resignation. And we have done our best to fill, to fill that position. We just haven't had candidates for that, for that position. We reviewed a number of options, one of which is, I guess, a cheaper option, which is the program called Ingenuity that we used last year to get us through the pandemic when we had 10 to 20 staff members out at any given time. That was essentially an entirely, you know, to come back to those words of a, what was it? A, yes, asynchronous, sorry. Synchronous learning, meaning with a teacher. At the time, asynchronous meant essentially a student worked on their own on a digital platform. So Ingenuity is an option for these courses. However, it does not give students access to a certified, a certified teacher of chemistry or biology. The option that we are, that I am endorsing and that I am recommending, that's on the agenda for, for tonight, is working with the New Jersey Center for Teacher Learning. This provides our students in those courses access to certified instruction. The certified instruction would occur once per week per course. So they would get a lesson with a virtual teacher. So the students would be in classroom, being supervised by, I'm referring to as our local substitute, someone we hired from our community to be a sub in a class who does not have any science background, does not have a science certificate. We, we did our best to find that person. So these students will get access to one lesson per week in addition to office hours with this certified, certified staff member, certified teacher to answer questions, provide feedback, comment on assessments, and that sort of thing. So throughout the course of the week, they'll have two, two experiences with this, with the certified individual. The certified person also works with our substitute that we have in-house. You know, I'm going to say the word local substitute, I kind of made up that term today. The local substitute that we provided, who's not certified, will work with the certified science teacher with the lesson plans, will be prepared for their classes so that when they teach to those kids on those four days where there is not a certified staff member, they'll be better prepared. This person also provides the lesson planning, the assessments, and the grading for, for these students. So that, that's really, that's what, in a nutshell, what this hand carry, hand carry is about. There are a number of, you know, other ideas that are coming out there. You know, we, we don't have the time to get anybody in-house certified. We don't have the time to recruit someone who's in another current position. You know, that's kind of what happened to us. This staff member was recruited and, and, you know, took on a job in another district. Our recruiting is, would, you know, leave us, they'd have to give 60 days' notice and that sort of thing. So at the moment, you know, this is the, this is the best choice that, that I'm recommending at this point in time. You know, this is a process, I'm not sure if you're aware, I think the pandemic learning gave a, gave a bad name to virtual instruction. Virtual instruction has existed for many years. This is often a, a answer to a district who can't provide an AP course that students want to take. Or they might partner with another district who's offering a, you know, a teacher who's doing a, a virtual session. So these, these types of systems have been around for a long time. I think the abundance of virtual learning throughout the pandemic gave everyone a sense of, you know, sort of a bad taste in their mouth of, you know, why can't we move on? Which we have, I think we've done a great job with, with what we have. But in this particular situation, I believe these students deserve the best that we can offer them at this, at this point in time. And, and this is, this is this program through NJ, NJCTO. So that's my comments on this. I don't know if you want to wait, if you have questions now, or if you want to ask them during education when you're voting on it.
Well, we're not, since we're in the topic, we might as well go ahead. Carrie, you have a question?
Yeah, Dan, who's been doing the lesson plans up till this point for this class?
The teacher just left us last Friday. Last Friday was that teacher's last night.
I have two questions.
Kate has a question, and then I'll have two.
My first question is, have we looked to partner with another district for this, for these courses?
We've looked. I've spoken with my county colleagues, all the county, all my colleagues in Passaic County. I know our science supervisor has reached out to her organization for, you know, creative solutions and that sort of thing. So partnerships are not things that, that have came up in those, those conversations. When we ask for, you know, do you have teachers for this position? It usually comes back to me, no, but if you find one, please let me know, because we'd like to hire one too. So that's, that's typically the, the conversation that goes on in the county. It's, it's, you know, not funny, but it's usually the, the joke of the county is when you're looking for science teachers, and I mentioned this earlier, if you're looking for certified science teachers, especially chemistry and physics or world languages, it's very, you know, very hard to come by.
You have two questions.
My second, thank you, Linda. Yeah, my second question is, I'm very uncomfortable voting this in as the way it reads that this contract would go through June. Is it possible to change the contract to be a monthly contract? For, because what if we did find someone that could teach these courses, like on March 30th? Then we'd be looking to, you know, I, I'm very uncomfortable voting on this from now until the end of the year. And I understand this, no one likes this. We need a teacher for our kids. We don't have one right now. I get it. But I really think that we should continue to look for a certified in-person teacher. And I do not want to vote this in for the remainder of the year. Is it possible to change that contract?
I'm, I'm sure it's, you know, we pay, it's a month-by-month process. You know, those are things that we will take care of. By no means does this mean we've, we've waved the white flag on the year. We are going to continue looking for this position and planning, you know, you know, I pretty much can, I don't want to give you a guarantee, but I know that we'll have a solution by September. It does not mean we're not looking. If we get an application in the folder next week.
So then can we change this resolution to be just monthly?
We will act on it.
One second, because I have Courtney, then I have Jay. Question.
Just finishing out that, that last question of mine.
Yes, I mean, it's month-to-month, it's monthly charges.
It is a monthly charge. So if we did find.
This can be rewritten then.
It can, do we have to?
Well, if we don't approve it tonight, we can't pay the vendor and we can't start.
March 1st.
Right, March 1st is when we want to go. If we wait till the next board meeting, that's, that's a long period of.
So this is almost like a not to exceed or not to extend past June 24th, but it can be shorter if we find a solution.
Probably should say that.
Yeah, I, I think so it shows that we're not committed to the full four months is what I'm getting. Why don't we wait until we come into education? By then, where you can think about what it should say.
Right, oh, you're, oh, yes, you're right. Yeah, you're right. Courtney, you had another question?
I had a question too. You said that it's virtual, once a week.
You said it's virtual, once a week per course. Is that $7,000 for each course?
No, this is total. This is total.
Are the courses just chemistry and biology?
That's it, just, just biology and chemistry course.
And then can you just speak of a little bit? Because I think people on the board might feel a little bit more comfortable to know what a new hire salary would look like for a course like this. Would it be over $7,000 a month? Or would it be less than that or around that?
A part of a question.
It depends on the experience, of course, but obviously with a hire, you have to factor in salaries and benefits. So most likely, yes.
A little bit.
Because you're.
Hiring a person would be higher than this amount.
Yeah, so the cost of a district is always more than the salary. It's the salary plus.
Right.
And we do have a, we do have a vacated salary that we're no longer paying monthly for the staff member who left us.
That's what I was referring to. So this is a bit more cost-effective. I think sometimes when we see such a big cost, it's a bit daunting.
And from what I understand, it also includes lab work. So, because I questioned why it was only, you know, four periods, but it's including labs.
Right.
So, I mean, first, just to be clear, they're teaching two classes, not five, right?
Well, it's actually four classes, just.
Four classes plus four, or lab.
Plus labs.
So you mean the courses or the, the teacher we're talking about?
The courses.
Four courses, but they are lab courses. So there's a, you know, additional workload that goes with that.
Okay.
They're teaching one full lesson per week per course, plus offering one period of open office hours for each course for students to, you know, interact, ask questions, have follow-up, go over an assessment, information, that, that sort of.
Four sections or four courses? Sorry, I'm standing in the question. Yeah, just go ahead, go ahead.
Four sections, for a different class period. Most people teach five. Social studies would teach five. Science teaches four, because there's also a lab connected to each period.
Right.
So four plus four labs is the same as five social studies, essentially.
Is that, that's where you.
That's where I was going.
Looking for, okay.
And then the second piece, right, in, in this perfect world, if we got somebody on March 10th, they applied and we liked and we were going to hire them.
Then we move forward.
So we're going to be able to change this to read that this is paid month-to-month, this is a month-to-month contract, right?
So this, I mean, so this is an approval for us to pay monthly, in my opinion. This doesn't, this isn't a contract that you're voting on.
7,100.
Right, so.
7,100 per month.
Right, so again, maybe I'll defer, and I think Kate will make that motion later, but I'll, maybe I'll defer to Andy when we talk just about the wording on this, because I do feel it does say March 20, March through June.
Yeah.
And it says the cost is to be paid per month, but doesn't say that.
The contract.
We're tied to.
All right. Andy, is there any language we can use to, you know, just deflect the little? Think of that while you're talking about this.
That's why, that's why I wanted to throw it out until we got to education. Thanks, Andy.
Okay, Jay, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just, you know, to bring it down to my level. And this isn't something that our science supervisor could take care of instead of hiring outside?
Well, you know, we have a science supervisor, she can't switch that period, take that substitute, put it, cover her class, and she do the labs? Well, supervisors don't, don't teach classes.
Okay, but I mean.
So in my, in my opinion, I wouldn't trade supervision or professional development goals for $27,000. I mean, I wouldn't put $136,000 staff member into these, into these positions when we have, you know, the supervision of three very important departments. We're talking about math, science, industrial arts. We have significant, you know, professional development goals that we are, we're in the middle of. You know, we're young, we're year one of a five-year plan in math. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of those things that go with it. So in my, in my opinion, I wouldn't trade those things for this.
Like I said, I was dumbing it down for me, but I mean, you're talking one per week, so I didn't know, you know. When everybody hears one per week, why can't somebody go cover that class?
Right, you know, the planning, planning and the grading and those types of things, that's, that takes a toll.
You had a question, Mike? Oh, well, I can, I put you at your hand. Go ahead, Courtney.
I'm wondering, I'm just thinking, because I am in education and because of, you know, what I know, I think that this situation is going to come up time and time and time and time again. And I think in Education Committee, I'd like to ask that it's discussed what the future plans are going to be going forward to make sure that in whatever section we're talking, whether it's the sciences or the math or industrial arts, that there is a plan going forward and that we're not relying on computers to teach our children going forward. So I can request that that goes on Education Committee.
Absolutely.
Sure. If you read any of the trade magazines, Edweek, or go to different websites, there's a common theme and there's an article every month about a teacher shortage. And there's more teachers retiring every June than there are entering teacher training programs. So it's just, it's not going to get better. It may go worse.
I feel exactly what Courtney's saying is a valid concern. Are, we need to look forward into the next school year and see where we're going to land so that we're not sitting around this table and saying, okay, now we have to get somebody. You know, what are our plans? How, how are we going to make it work?
So we are going to open up some more extensive recruitment in key areas. I think there are certain teaching positions that we can fill relatively easily. I would say elementary K to 5, we could fill those because we have plenty of applicants on our website. Some of your secondary courses, science, German, you know, some of your advanced math classes, they're more difficult to fill, which is why we're going to be doing more recruitment this spring at local colleges and beyond, just to see if we can bring people in in key areas that we know we're going to need.
This is, I, 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 I'm going to come right to you, Ray, and then I'm going to come to you, Kate. I think that the board is giving you a direction that that's exactly what we're looking for. So I would say, Dan, going forward into the next Education Committee, that there's going to be some, that you should have.
And I mean, that's not a process we're not familiar with. I mean, but sort of that's what led to this situation, is that we had a staff member who went to become dual-certified and then took those dual certificates to another school district. So, you know, as, as a teacher becoming more marketable, that, that, you know, those are all the side effects of those. But we've done it in the past. We have a successful process with getting teachers who had science, other science, who gets certified in physics to help our expanding goals in physics. So, you know, that's a, that's a process that we, that we do. And then, and certainly we can, you know, continue to talk about it in that committee and.
And then I think you can, then it will be open and there will be minutes and everything that people can see. Ray, then Kate.
So I, I do think though, right? People do have an opportunity to, just like we did with nurses, we can bring someone in that doesn't have a certification, as long as they're going towards a certification, right? Is, is there, like, isn't there a path for that?
Do you have 20 days? Like an alternate route? Yeah. Thing. Well, yes, the problem is, in particular, some of the areas we're talking about, a scientist, somebody with a science background is probably making a good salary in the private sector. If you're some sort of scientist, it's going to be hard to recruit them at an entry-level salary. And maybe something where you have to be more aggressive in your, in your offer, which is something we may be forced to do in certain areas.
We've done that with nurses, right?
Well, nurses are, nurses are a little different, because the New Jersey Department of Ed authorized emergency certificates for them, which they did that for that field, learning consultants. But that's not the case, like, teachers would have to go on alternate route, which is a little different than the emergency certification.
There's an alternate route and, and you can, right, you, you can offer salaries. The other thing, though, is. There's an alternate route and and you can, right, you you can offer salaries. The other thing, though, is some people may just not want to do those things in that world anymore either, right? So, I mean, that's happened before, or sometimes they might get downsized in that world. And maybe they're a little bit older and and they just don't want to go through that again.
We have, we have.
They can go, and we've seen that happen.
That we I re.
We had, we had a chemistry teacher here where that happened.
Chemist that came and and taught for us that took the alternate route because he had retired.
Right.
And but he was still looking to keep his, you know, hands in the field.
Right.
So I I do think that that is an avenue to like, great. Kate, you have something else?
My first is a comment. Um, I always have three things. I'm sorry. We have a nor- nurses and bus driver shortage also. It's sad to me that when we have a teacher shortage, we can talk about replacing them with computers. Um, uh, it just, it's it's upsetting. Um, and I I know all of us would agree with that, every one of us, but I need to make that statement.
I was recommending against replacing with a computer. We had that option. That's not the option that I recommended.
I'm not gonna, I I'm not gonna comment on that. I'm gonna stay where I am right now, which is, um, have we offered to our current staff? I believe we probably offered to our current staff a six period class and it just doesn't fit. We we don't have enough to cover this.
Lab periods.
And have we offered to the current staff if they would kind of like I heard Ray saying, you know, if they got dual it um, you know, I can't talk about a Smith for this contract, but I work at another place. I could talk about my own life and my own contract where if I was to go to college right now, I would have to use those credits in my current job for two years and if not, I'd have to pay that money back. Uh, so I don't know what you what, you know, I'm not allowed to comment on this contract, but I'm allowed to comment on mine. And I know I have that in my own work environment. Um, and so whoever's on negotiations or whatever you want to do with that information, because I heard you say someone became more educated and then took their more education and went somewhere else. That doesn't necessarily mean we paid for it. Got it. Okay. Um. Well, then that's our salute. Um, have we asked our current staff if anyone's looking to get another dual enrollment and and look to pay for more credits? Just another outside idea that I don't think we've done, you know?
And I think that that leads to like the bigger picture that I was talking about. I think we have to, when you're in the business of education, you have to get creative and knowing these articles that are coming out that you're reading, Dr. Anemo, knowing this is coming. We have to get out of our box and think, how can we support the people that are currently our people and keep them here, but do the programs that we want to do for our children? And that's what I'm asking to be done in Education Committee, not so much recruiting a scientist who doesn't want to teach in his chemistry lab anymore, helping our own people get better for our children who are here right now. That's what I'd like to say.
Okay, so that that will be part of next Education Committee. Some discussion on that, okay? All right, I guess your next topic?
Uh, okay, I'm gonna go through. Um, today was our um February twenty second um Professional Development Day that I've been talking about for quite some time. Uh, we had a great day, uh, true uh true teamwork of, you know, input from um, you know, central office, administration, staff, uh, you know, everyone, everyone worked together to to get a great day put in place. We had a presentation for um, we broke it up into two groups. We had a K five presentation and a six twelve presentation in our high school auditorium um, from a uh Mrs. Alicia Di Lorenzo, who is a um uh speaker on behalf of social emotional learning and social emotional wellness for both students and staff. Um, so it's interesting transition directly from what Courtney just talked about um in terms of what are we doing for for our staff. I mean, the the whole the whole tone of the sessions of training we had today is about um, you know, our our teachers um are feeling the the are feeling the pressures of the world right now and and uh, and that was the tone of the of the the um of the day that, you know, teaching has always been a difficult and challenging profession. And over the last two years, it's only gotten, it's only gotten worse to the point of, and you you guys named some, you know, Dr. Animal referenced a a article, uh, we were, we were exposed to many statistics today with the presentation. I'm just gonna I'll read a few. Um, just really directly what we're talking about. Over forty percent of these, these were, um, I I think these were from USA Today um, national polls. Um, over forty percent of educators are seriously considered leaving the profession. Um, over fifty seven percent of K twelve educators seriously worry about burnout. More than fifty percent of educators spend sixty hours or more a week on school related activities, including thinking about lesson plans, et cetera. One in three teachers are in serious distress. Almost ninety percent of educators report that work is the primary cause of stress in their lives. So these are things that are that are very real. Um, and leads to some of the prices that we we have at the moment that we're just discussing. Um, so we are beginning this relationship with um Alicia, Alicia Di Lorenzo. Uh, she came highly recommended from members of the county, some other other colleagues from Northern New Jersey for that um she worked with uh their staff and in their administration about um staff wellness first. You know, the the theory that a a D rate deregulated adult cannot help to regulate students who are in crisis. So we have to work on our staff first and that, you know, with a a staff who's focused on their own personal wellness is gonna be better able to transition that to to our students. And we know we've got a, you know, we've we've got a nation and a world in crisis following following the pandemic in 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 a lot a lot of ways. So um, that was a tone of two sessions, uh, one session for each of our our groups today. We had a smaller breakout session with the same trainer, uh, session three. And if you wanna uh comment where we started working on some action plans, so it's not just a and that's, I think, the tone you've gotten from me over the years, I don't like to have what, you know, what I refer to as drive by professional development where someone comes in, they do a little presentation and they leave, we don't have any follow through. So uh, we're beginning this relationship. We had a small group of um staff from across the districts or from K twelve departments and schools work with this trainer to begin working on action plans for how do we build more social, emotional and wellness into our staff's lives? And how does it translate to our students' lives? Uh, we are bringing her back again to speak at our administrative retreat over the summer in July, and then she's gonna be coming back again to help us work on the action plan that we put in place um, next year and then a few visits uh throughout the year and just and just help us with that work. So we are committing to this, our staff, uh, overall wellness of our of our staff, uh, staff and students. Uh, so that was just one part of the PD day. Uh, the other parts that I have been discussing for months is about the work we did with Linkit. So we've we got our um comparative data from Benchmark A and Benchmark B that our teachers were able to review for the first time today. We just, we just finished the assessment. Lincoln did a great job in preparing our teacher slides for today. So our staff was able to get into Linkit and see the comparative data, see the growth of their students, be able to um, identify um New Jersey student learning standards and English and language arts that we still need work in and and to, you know, be able to begin planning lessons for that uh for that work. So that that was a, you know, two, two, you know, highlights from the from the day that we're we're very excited about. Um, I don't know if you want to comment on that session?
Yeah, I just. Okay, so I just wanted to also add that um one of the strategic goals, which I think the board is aware of, is on well being and mental health. And one of the subcategories, if you remember, some of you that are working in that subgroup is promoting mental and physical wellness for students and staff along with other parts about strengthening those peer to peer relationships, school to home connections. So today's breakout session also worked in that area to start that process ahead of time of some of those goal areas and brainstorm because who better than, as we said, and she said today, you need to have, you know, a top down support from the board, administration down, but also grassroots up to meet in the middle. So that's the plan moving forward. It was an energized group, that third session, that's ready to work. We plan to have follow up um, meetings. The board has heard me talk about the Dreams Project with the Department of Education that's offering free nurtured heart training, which we're planning to send two people to get trained. We're all, they're also gonna offer us two other additional days, which we'll talk about a little more in Ed Committee next month about what this breakout session committee is gonna do. So I plan to put that on the Ed Committee next month or March so that um we can brief the board on some of those finer details of what what happened in our session. The other thing I just wanted to mention is we did also train our special class aides in child um mental health. We did do um applying positive reinforcement. So we're trying to focus on some of those other wellness areas that our our other staff may benefit from learning about. We did do CPR and we did do Crisis Prevention Institute training today. So I would definitely say it was a it was a busy day with a lot going on, a lot of cross collaborative planning sessions. Um, I think you also had some other people working with other departments. So it was, it was a busy day, but the feedback was that everybody felt it was something relative to their profession.
Before I go to this, but I have one question. Dan, can we get a, can we get a copy of the, I was like a bio on this person?
Sure, yeah, I'll I'll share you, um, I'll share her website with you so you can take a look.
Wonderful for all the board members to be able to look at and see who's actually coming in to do the training.
That was one question I had.
Oh, you know what I did just want to mention for the board also? We did use the grant to fund. Um, so she was written into the grant to meet our grant goals for mental health and wellness.
Harry? Okay, um, years ago, I know there was a committee, a professional development committee made up of administrators and faculty members. And those faculty members gave input as to what they felt that they needed professional development in. Do we still have that committee where faculty members are involved or is it solely administration?
We have school improvement panels in each in each building. Um, so prior to achieve NJ, what you're referring to was the um L OPDC, or is it Local Professional Development Committee? That was, that was um a, you know, state run or or not state, state mandated process that changed. And we have, we had achieve NJ. So when achieve NJ was put into place with the evaluation system, all those types of things, the school improvement panel replaced the uh local professional development committee. We also put in place the uh the DIAC, you know, that and that um, that was a um group put in place for a few, it was a I believe it was a two year, then it became a four year process. That was when districts were transitioning to evaluation models. So um, the DIAC is is no more, but we have school improvement panel in uh in each building that's in that's in place. That can, that's participation of the um building or department super, building principal and department supervisor and um staff, teaching staff members.
So staff members do have input into what they feel they need as professional development?
Yes.
If I were to ask staff members if they have input, they would say absolutely.
Oh, I mean, you could ask them.
I'm not gonna ask them anything, but I'm just hypothetically, I I I want to make sure that our staff, our faculty is involved in in their needs being met. I mean, the mental health thing, I think, is great, and I think they all would agree that they they needed that because I know that as a teacher for thirty five years, as this district changed, I retired earlier because I was burned out. And um so I understand what they're going through, um, but I would also like to see our faculty much more involved in what they what they need more than that.
Mrs. Sawyer, if I can interject, because I'm objective, I sit outside that education cloud. As I put the budget together, those teachers, those faculty members can go to their building principals and they can say to their building principal, I think I want to take this, you know, I have this opportunity here. And many of them do come across this. You you approve professional development every board meeting because somebody wants to take professional development course. And they bring that to their building principal's attention, who then turns around, does the the paperwork and gives it to Mr. Novak and Mr. Dr. Anemo. So I think that as long as a faculty member finds something worthwhile and they want to pursue it, they go to their building principal or their supervisor and there it is. It doesn't start from up here.
So I'm just gonna say you make this sound much easier than maybe it is.
Okay, well, they have the money and there there's money available for them.
My uh Title II money, um, although I use many of it for district level professional development, there's also money at each building um, for professional development. And I don't know if I I, to be honest with you, I don't know what we've declined if it, unless it didn't match uh district goals. You know, that's that's the um, you know, stipulations of using Title II money is they have to admit our identified needs. And I can also comment, I mean, I've I've I receive numerous emails from, you know, staff members all over the district who are who are interested in in this and that. And just to give you a small example, I have a meeting coming up soon, like, you know, not an official meeting, just a you know, during a during a prep prep period to talk about um, you know, a reading strategy discussion that um a couple of our staff members um, in in a few different buildings are passionate about and talked about. So I I do listen and hear from our staff. Anybody who presents something to me, I'm always open to to that discussion. So um, you know, I I personally feel that I'm very approachable and and, you know, and and takes, take our staff's um desires and and goals into account. Uh, however, we also, you know, I'm the director of education, so um I've been hired to do a specific job. Um, and I feel that we're being very successful with the uh implementation of Conquer Math. Um, our work in balanced literacy has been, has been ongoing and has yielded success. Um, you know, so you you know, I I think there's a, there's a wide range of different um professional development um avenues that that we have that's available. We have district goals that I think if you need, we need to focus, you know, and again, I refer to uh you know, some districts do the drive by professional development. They bring in a speaker, they talk about a topic and then and then it doesn't, doesn't go. I mean, we've had a very uh sustained commitment to um some professional development goals year over year that have, you know, really, you know, the fact that our staff could sit today and look at student performance data, you know, that wasn't possible four years ago. And that's from the plan that we had. And and to be honest with you, Terry, if we've asked everyone to vote, do you want to learn more about reading data? I don't know if we would have had overwhelming response because everyone hates it, you know, but we had to do it.
Fifteen years ago.
But we had to do it. Yeah, but you didn't have a plan fifteen years ago. Now you have eight.
Courtney, you're next, and then Ray, I'll come back to you.
I think it's great, Mrs. Francisco, that whatever a teacher wants, they can ask their building principal and get and get. I think that's great to hear and and I'm and I'm glad to hear that. And Mr. Novak, I think you're doing a wonderful job with professional development and making sure that our teachers are getting all of that. However, I think what Mrs. Sawyer was saying was more about, correct me if I'm wrong, the culture of the school. You know, teachers are kinda, I know we have the mental health and and we're doing it, but sometimes teachers just want to know that they're using their time and utilizing their time. Sometimes they just want some downtime. Sometimes they just want team building. So I think Mrs. Sawyer brings up a good point that, you know, you have a lot of professional days built in. You have a lot of meetings after school, like maybe you should, could just ask them, what do you want to do? Do you want to take, go for coffee? Do you, you know, like that would be so much bigger than self, teaching about self help or mental health or that would just do it. So I think what Mrs. Sawyer was saying was kind of the bigger picture about culture and not to say that you're not doing enough professional development. But I think she brings up a really valid and good.
I I agree with you wholeheartedly. And I think what you can see from me and and the work that I've done over these last years in in this role, and even in my time as a principal, was that exact understanding. Uh, you know, and if you want me to go back and track how many times that we've given them time in their professional learning communities or with their grade level in their building to just do the things that you're you're describing. So this isn't like it's a you know, every second of every PD day is because, you know, to follow through on the district goal. So we understand the, we understand the balance. Uh, very often, when we have a three session PD day, one session is typically devoted to exactly what you're what you're talking about. It might not make it to your level and and, you know, no one's giving a pat on the back to say, oh, that did happen. You know, they might, you might hear the other side of it. But I assure you that I'm very mindful of that. And that is typically, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, that is typically part of almost every PD day that I put together is that there is time for our teachers to work together, you know, on the things that they need to do. We actually just did it uh recently with our um January or January, we, or the King Day, we canceled our plans. Um, and we gave it to them. We knocked off the, it was supposed to be an extended hour. We took away the extended hour because we knew, you know, it was it was it was actually a give back or a thank you for how they came back from the um holiday break to all of these, you know, the the COVID cases on the rise and that sort of thing. So we shifted. So we shifted gears, I was gonna, you know, we were gonna go Lincoln then and we said, you know what, now, now we were reflective on it. Now's not the time for Lincoln and now's the time for, you know, appreciation and, and thanks. So, you know, I'm, I'm very, I, I agree with you, but I am very mindful, uh, very mindful of that.
Ray, and then Kate.
Okay, Kate. Is your question on topic, cause I'm, I'm on a completely different topic.
Oh.
Uh, different than PD?
No.
Oh, okay. Oh.
You're finishing up PD, go before me.
No.
Okay.
So I know you mentioned something about giving some good statisti, I'm a statistic person, right? So something where you said fifty seven percent are feeling burnt out and something about sixty hours a week on school related, and I, and I see that, cause I've seen, I've seen some people writing papers and grade them before a meeting. Um, so my, I guess question to you is, you, do you really, do you feel that they have all the tools, right? So you provide tools, is you feel they have the right training? You feel that they have a system that they can use or are you just saying, here's the tools, just kinda figure it out and do your own thing?
Yeah, that's a big, that's a big question.
Yeah.
You know, I think in specific areas, they have the tools and I think there's specific areas where we, we need to give the tools. You know, I think professional development never ends, you know, um, you know, improvement never ends, so.
And that's good, is, I, I appreciate letting me answer, cause it sounds like you're saying, like, you even feel, hey, we could do better at this, right?
Agree, I mean, we could always do better at, at everything, you know, it's just a matter of how, how, you know, coming to some of the points. How much can you do and still maintain a happy, happy staff who wants to come to work? You know, so that you can only, you can only do so much with human beings and, and I think we're all very cognizant of that.
But I mean, just think about that, right? Fifty six, like, almost six out of every ten of your teachers are feeling burnt out and they're working sixty hours a week or more. And so that's where, I, we as board members, we listen to parents when, when they're talking about those things and the, and the kids feeling stressed out about having to learn on computers and, and virtual learning and back and forth between being in school and out of school. And I think that, like, that's something that you have to take into consideration as administrator, all, everybody, right? And then we, we do also as board members, we have to take that into consideration, cause ultimately at the end of the day, they are the team, right? I, I say to my staff, they are my customer. The teachers are your customer at the end of the day, right? The students and the parents are the teacher's customer at the end of the day. I, like, I just, if we can work together in the right way, I think that morale probably would be higher than it is.
And I think it's important because at this point we're seeing that, that, that morale issue i- i- is causing people every day. And especially when Dr. Anamon is saying to us, we, you, you know, I gotta go outside sources to even recruit people because that's how it is. So I think we have to take that part.
It's clearly not a Westover problem, it's a nationwide problem. When you see statistics like this, right, that's USA Today, like, like, every school district has to be cognizant of that.
I don't think we're saying, and, and Dan, I think that's what we're trying, we're not saying you're, you're, you're doing this wrong, you know, or you're not doing it. We're just trying to say, we gotta think even bigger because of where we are, but it's not us at all.
I think you get it because you wrote down those statistics.
I didn't take it that way.
Okay.
Uh, I just think there's a balance. I, I think if, if, you know, there's not a focus, there's not a bigger picture, it's hard to, to take everyone's input from every corner of the district and try and make a plan out of it. That's, that's really what I was trying to explain in a, in a summary.
I, I think, I think we did understand that and thank you. Kate, you have another question?
Yeah. Um, I don't expect the answer tonight, um, but maybe you could email me or update the board on, um, the New Jersey graduation assessment that you explained. Thank you for having that on your report tonight. I'm curious how many students the high school has that's suing portfolio assessment this year? Um, I would ask that because obviously education's been different in the last, you know, few school years. So I'm wondering, um, I don't know how many opportunities our students were given to pass a test, like, did the ASVAB come as many times as it normally does? Maybe even more times than normal, we would need.
Been in the high teens to, to low twenties over the last few years.
Okay, and so this year you think.
As the portfolio appeal had been put in place, that's, um, those, those are our typical numbers. I don't know this year's numbers, um, exactly, I can.
You think they're average compared to all the others?
I think you could email it out.
Yeah, I was just curious if there's been a change and also like if we're giving more opportunities to take another test. For instance, like I say, the ASVAB, it's just one example where you can have someone come in and give the test more times than we have before COVID. So just thoughts that I wanted to share while you went over that.
It's been my experience that we, we give, we try to give students every opportunity we can. Nobody wants to get to the portfolio appeal, they wanna, they wanna pass that graduation requirement, uh, and, you know, the best way that they can.
Okay. And what's the S R clubs?
Oh, the S R clubs, that's.
So I see, I think I, um, did I leave my quota for director of education?
Yeah, I think you did.
In your motion not to exceed that. So in a, uh, so in a, in a nutshell, I've used that phrase too many times tonight, but, uh, so S R clubs, I just wanted, before you look to vote, um, there have been, I've heard some questions from, from members of the board about why there's this type of club in this building and that type of club in that building. So there's a variety, and I should've said clubs in general, there's a variety of clubs on the agenda tonight that are funded by different sources. So Title One clubs are only available for Title One schools and that is Mcapen, Upper Hume Lake, Marshall Hill and Apshua. So those are the only four schools that will have access to Title One clubs. One of the Title One activities that you'll see on the agenda tonight is, uh, Family Literacy Night, which has been a traditional event in our buildings that have had, um, Title One funding over time. So you'll see those on there, just because a school who has access to Title One funds doesn't have a family literacy night on the agenda, does not mean they're not going to have it. It's just, they did it now, some of them like to get it in during, um, Reacross America Week. That's a typical one, I know in Marshall Hill and, and, and U G L, other schools, um, other schools will do it at a different, different point in time. Family Math Night is something that is, uh, this year being funded through Title Four, which is, uh, a structure that all six of our elementary schools will have access to. Well, if you do not see family math on, at this point in time, it does not mean they won't have it in the future. So, um, those are the, those are the two that are, that are a little bit more structured. Every school will have a family math night, our title schools will have a family literacy night. The S R clubs are the, um, those are clubs that are funded through S R Three, which is, you know, eh, as a summary COVID relief fund. Um, there is a stipulation within the grant for after school clubs that don't necessarily have to be academic focused. They're also to be, uh, well-rounded, uh, well-rounded focus, uh, as well. So you'll see a variety of, uh, after school clubs for, um, academics and then you'll also see clubs for, um, social emotional learning activities, team building, that, that sort of thing. So I just wanna give a statement because you're gonna see a variety, you're gonna continue to see clubs, um, over the next two months as we get them, as we get them approved.
Okay, thank you.
One more question about the fun. Is the family literacy night and the math night, is the goal of those clubs to get more home community, school support or more academic driven? Like, I'm just curious.
So, uh, so Title One, um, the, the, the structure for that night, the funding for that night is intentional for bringing out families. So to get families to come out, you know, but that's why there's food money, uh, in the grant.
Okay.
You know, food money is, you know, food brings people out, um, you know, so we have the, so that's in there. So the purpose of, uh, the purpose of, of Title One family nights is, is just that. Uh, Title Four funding is innovative programs, um, so at family math night, it could be, again, it's also, eh, you know, family connection, family math. That, that's, that's our goal of that, is to also have family involvement, things that, um, uh, parents can do to support our work at home. You know, a little, you know, how to use cereals as counters and, and all those little things. So, um, so yeah, I mean, the, the purpose of all is to increase, uh, family engagement in our students' lives at home.
Okay, um, special reports and correspondence, Mrs. Francisco?
We have the, um, meeting minutes from the month of January, the organization.
I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, Board of Education minutes.
Thank you.
January third, eighteenth, twenty fifth.
Thank you.
I was trying to finish.
And does anybody have a question on the minutes? If not, um, vote, uh, well, voice vote, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I abstain on the eighteenth and the twenty fifth. Aye for the third, okay? President's report, well, I wanna say thank you to Mrs. Sawyer for filling in for me this, for the last month or so. I greatly appreciate it and I'm glad to be back and looking forward to seeing everybody and not looking forward to talking about the budget, but we have budget items that we're gonna be talking about, so we're back into the thick of things. Um, public comment, this portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of thirty minutes and then time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the thirty minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during the public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and to give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and the board and their administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment? If not?
See none, I think most of them vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Need a post? Okay, now motion for, to adopt the agenda.
Just have a couple changes to make.
Can you read this, Ray?
I can read that, but I do have another, another change first.
Okay.
So on hand carry, the white one, this is, uh, Budget and Finance Resolution Number Eight. We're gonna change the account number first.
Okay. I changed the account numbers on everybody's sheet.
You have it ready? Okay, so you have that there. So the new motion will read, the recommendation of the superintendent to approve New Jersey Center for Teaching and Learning, comma, Trenton, New Jersey, to provide direct and supplemental instruction for chemistry and biology for the two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two school year, effective March first, twenty twenty-two, on a monthly basis at a cost of seven thousand one hundred dollars per month for four sections and related labs and office hours. This will continue until June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, or until a replacement teacher is found.
Is that?
Okay, so we'll get that in a minute, correct it. And secondly, on the blue sheet, hand carry number two, Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution Number Forty-seven, we're gonna pull from the agenda. We're gonna change to that already, we'll clear that up at the next board meeting. So we're gonna delete forty-seven and that's all. That's after.
Okay, okay.
We're gonna delete, we're gonna pull this from the account and just, uh, point of clarification on Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution Number Twenty-eight. This is for our website committee, we're extending extra hours for, uh, teaching staff members who are part of that committee. Uh, just to, for everybody's clarification, we do also have community members on the committee, they're just there in a voluntary role, so their names would not be on here.
I thought there was a different community meeting, I didn't realize there were meeting with the teachers.
They're separate, I just wanted to let people know that it's not just a staff group, it's also, uh, we have, pay as a community members, but they're not paid, they're volunteer members.
They're not on the.
Well, they're on the website committee, but they're just not paid members, I guess what I'm trying to say. But we thank them for volunteering and helping us out.
Okay, so I need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda presented.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented with corrections on hand carry.
Mike?
Hand carry.
Mike?
I move to accept the agenda as amended with changes to hand carry one and hand carry, uh, education, hand carry two on personnel. Need a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You both? All right, education, Mrs. Sawyer. Okay, move to, um, approve agenda items one through six and eight. And number seven is voted on after executive session. I need a second?
Second. There.
Any discussion on these items? We have. There's no discussion?
Roll call.
Mrs. Sawyer?
Yes, on, um, everything, no on resolution number eight.
Mr. Grino?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, and that's for after executive session, Personnel, Student Affairs, Mr. Grino.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, bring forward items one through forty-six and then on hand carry number two, um, item forty-eight under Personnel and Student Affairs.
I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion on any of the items under Personnel? Mr. Grino?
So I know there are a number of people that are retiring or have retired over the past couple of months, but I just wanna say, um, happy retirement, again, uh, when you say regret in here, um, Alex, it is with regret that, uh, Leslie Fink's going to retire, but, uh, we're losing a great English teacher, um, and Mac, and Terry said one of the best for sure. Um, and we will miss her, but I think that, um, this will be a great time in her life and, and I'm sure that they've got some fun stuff planned for the future. So congratulations on, uh, your upcoming retirement, Leslie.
Kate? Um, number twenty, I mean, we have nine amazing educators listed there, but I'm having a problem with how many hours did we approve last time? And I've seen nothing on what's been done in any of these website things other than Ray or Alex giving an update. And so I'm thinking, what has already been done in committee, where is the notes from committee or something that I would approve this again? And I know that there is a separate parent meeting, so are they coming together to discuss ideas? Are they doing, are these the people that are doing the research and looking at other districts' websites and saying, hey, we really like how random this is or loose it is that? Or I'm just confused and I don't really feel comfortable approving more hours for something that I haven't seen anything for yet.
Okay, no, that's, that's reasonable, it was the first, the original motion was for six hours.
Okay.
And we did, used most of those hours doing a lot of research and then meeting with our staff. And we did use most of those hours doing a lot of research and then meeting with our staff. So we had a tech committee meeting on Friday. And we just need to get more, I'm recommending more hours per teacher just so we can keep advancing this project. We're hoping to have it done by the end of the school year so we can use some time to have our old website up and running and a separate website, the new website, I guess a beta, if you will, running concurrently so we hit the ground running smoothly. So we do have some more work to do on the staff with, from our staff. So that's why the recommendation's on the agenda.
So they're not building the website? I mean, nine people already did fifty-four hours. And then we're going to do another fifty-four hours? So it takes a hundred and eight hours to plan? Then we're going to have to probably hire someone to actually build the website. I still think it's a little much, the twelve hours. But maybe I'm wrong. That's why I'm just confused.
They're not building the website. We do have, it's going to be a company we're going to hire.
Exactly.
To do that. But there's a lot more planning that goes involved in it. It's rather than just calling a company and say, do our website, what goes on it, where does it go? What comes off the website is probably just as important because if you have everything on your website, you can't find anything. So there's a lot of, I think, little things that go into this beyond the six hour. And maybe in hindsight, the original six hours was a little too optimistic. You know, maybe that should have been higher to start with. You know, it's our first time building a website, probably it's got to be ten, fifteen years.
The first six hours yielded a pretty positive result. I mean, we found the, we found the model that we want to use with that group. You know, they, they searched, you know, they searched websites all over the place and we came back with a plan that we believe is going to be successful. And that's what you offered. I think to summarize what this next six hours could be for, in my opinion from our discussion, it was identifying and collecting content.
I guess, I understand where Kate's coming from on adding the extra six hour. Are you going to come back to us and ask us for another six hours after that?
You could.
Well, I think that that's where we're starting because we, I understand the need, but I think that that's, Kate, I don't know if you can, is that the direction that you're talking about? You're afraid that we're going to get another six hours down the road?
Well, I know we have to hire someone to build it. And I haven't, I don't know what's been done so far. And without Dan, I will just quote him, without him saying identifying and collecting content, I was voting no. Now I'm not sure because if that's the next steps, I understand that. A hundred and eight hours of research to see what is a good working, I mean, no offense, I did that in ten minutes. We know which districts have a good website, but I don't know what they've been doing. So in my eyes, I'm like, a hundred and eight hours is a lot of time.
I'm thinking, maybe if we could have some kind of minutes, maybe some kind of summary.
And it's nothing.
They're going so that the, the board understands what the money is for. You know, what the action, I, I understand that this is something that's an undertaking, I get it. But I understand the question.
Identifying and collecting content, that makes sense to me. Everything else so far did not, so thank you.
We can, we can get an update to the board. It shouldn't be an issue.
Right.
So I, besides my, I'm on that outside committee. How many, we don't need names, just how many community members are there?
Maybe a half thousand?
Six?
Yeah, I would say about a half, yeah.
You're on this committee, aren't you?
Six, right, and there's nine teachers. I, I'm just saying, I'm wondering why, that's another question, right? There's a disparity between, we're paying teachers. There's nine of them. And we have six community members. There's three thousand students. And we have six people from the community.
Wow, that's a great point. I mean, as a staff member in another district, I don't go to my own website. And I use our website in West Milford as a parent every single day. I don't use my work website. That's a great point I never even thought of. I use one page on my work website. It's saved on my bar at the top. I click on that if I need PD hours, if I need my absence sheet, if I want to see my observations. That's it. I don't look at my work website. So that actually is a very good point that I never thought of. I, I think we should maybe get it out there that if more parents would like to come to a meeting or share that they can email you.
Actually, my thing was maybe that group could, maybe the teacher group could get smaller.
I believe that's been in our, that's sort of been in our plans all along is that that group is going to be, you know, intimately prepared with our progress as, as it goes. So I mean, to, to continue giving updates on what websites we looked at, you know, that's, that's not giving a whole lot, as you, as you said. We're in that, and that was, you know, Ray, if you can jump in, that was directly part of our conversation at the last tech meeting was now it's time for action and, and time for moving forward. If we truly want to have a product in place for next school year, we have to get, we have to get those, you know, that actual content. So that's, that's where we're at.
Well, I, I, I would say that I, in looking at it, I know how important this is to us. And it is important that we get, hit the ground running and that we're moving ahead so that it's ready for the, the fall. So I think I'm okay with it for this six hours. But I'm a little concerned as we go past that because it's, it's a very important, the website is very important to the district, but we also have to be conscious on what we're spending to get it there. I know it's going to cost money to get it built, so we need to, we need to be.
Tech committee will lean on Robert for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense. Is there any other question?
Linda, I just want to make one comment. I'm not, I'm not on this committee, but I, I heard the board talk a lot about teacher input and hearing from them in professional development. And now, on the opposite side, we're almost saying, wait a minute, there might be too much teacher input. And I just want to, coming out of the Mental Health and Wellness today, it talks about hearing and meeting people where they are and giving them the value, right? So when you talk about the cost here, it's about nineteen forty-four to be able to pay for this expansion. I think you're right, Linda, where, and I'm not on the committee, but maybe hear from them after this point.
Yes.
What specifically then would you need? But I, I think it's reasonable to add hours at this point because it may seem like a lot, but you know, when you get collaboratively people together, you, those hours pass pretty quickly. So I just think if you look at the costs and you just talked about wanting to value the, the stakeholders of them, I just think it would, it would be something that the board should consider.
I just think it needs to be caught. There needs to be a conscious effort looking at the hours so that we're not going over.
And I'm just going to make clear, it's not nineteen forty-four, it's thirty-eight eighty-eight because we've already paid six hours and we're going to pay another six. Now that said, there's a value in that. But it's not nineteen forty-four, it's thirty-eight eighty-eight. And you just keep adding that up, right? Your point is if there's another six hours, it's another nineteen forty-four, so.
I don't care about, look, all I'm saying is I know eventually we have to hire someone to build the website. I had no idea where we were. Don't ever say that. I would say that we would have too much teacher input. Whoa, never could do I think that's even possible. What I was saying was I don't understand what's already been done to approve more hours. I think everyone understood that. And for Terry to say, you didn't?
Sound like you said you were, you thought there were too many hours.
A hundred and eight hours, yeah. Too much each teacher input on something? Never. Especially when we were talking about PD, you can't take one and apply it to the other thing of what I was saying. That's it. I know where I'm voting now. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motions? I do have one thing I want to thank Mr. Bolger for remaining his time. The La Crosse team. I always love seeing volunteers on the list for things like that. And it's, it's quite a commitment, so I want to thank him there. I want to reiterate the same as Ray. Thank Leslie Fink for all of her years to the district as a community member and as a teacher, she is an asset that's going to be lost in the district. So we're sorry to see her go, but I wish her the best of everything in the future.
I have one last thing. Dan, thank you for explaining like the money, the title of money, the clubs and everything. I love, love seeing elementary clubs. And I just hope that the staff in each building and that, that we could come sometimes to, I'll just point it out, scooter football. I wish every elementary school had scooter football, not just two of them, you know, or three of them, whatever it is. I wish we had the same amount of clubs and opportunities in all six of our elementary schools. And I know that title funding falls into that and thank you for explaining it. I just could not vote on this without mentioning that I would love to see more clubs in all of our elementary schools and see the same opportunities for each student. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call for? Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain on thirty-five, abstain on thirty-three, and yes to everything else.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes on everything. I abstain on number three. Operations and Finance, Mr. Stillman.
I'd like to move on one to five. Second.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, I, I, my page is stuck together. Very sorry.
And, and the hand carries, right?
Well, there's other motions.
Okay.
There's no hand carry for operations?
You said that. Sorry, we were looking at.
You're okay. That, that's separate. You have a discussion?
I do, so I know that there are some people here like just so everybody knows, we have heard what you've said as parents regarding food service. And thank you, Barbara, for putting that out to bid to.
Well, we have to.
To the other food service companies, but boy, like, we've heard some.
We're very controlled.
Things for parents.
We're totally controlled by the Department of Agriculture.
Yeah.
So there was a two-year hiatus because of COVID. But now we have to go out to bid along with probably two-thirds of the school districts in the state of New Jersey. That would go well. Sorry.
Well, maybe some that are close together could work on.
Any other discussion under the motions? If not, roll call for?
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to move number six.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Abstain.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Abstain.
I would like to make a motion to move number seven to ten.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'll see, Mrs. Stevenson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve number one to two.
Second? I need a second.
Second. Second.
I'd like to discuss number one, the revision of the bylaw, specifically under special committees.
Your mic? Um, sorry, I just turned it on. Thank you. Specifically under special committees, we had discussed that most of those committees are in place except for special services. And I would like to, I'd like to see special services have a committee.
Okay. We did have one years ago. I do remember. I think it just started coming. I think going back, Howard just incorporated into the committee itself.
I think there's a need, and I, I'm just going to say what's in black and white. There's a lot of movement. When you look at personnel, people being moved, and I think, you know, maybe that can be discussed or, you know, maybe there could be things that happen.
So personnel items, so I, just when I was in Westwood, I did have a special education board committee. So I'm pretty familiar with the process with that. The, the unique thing there is that we didn't, we didn't have exactly like the same education committee set up as it's here. So.
You can rename me.
Well, I was going to say, what I would, what I would suggest because I would not be able to talk, and correct me if I'm long Andy, but I would not be able to talk about personnel matters in a special education committee meeting. It would still be handled through personnel. But what we could, which is why I do join, like I was at the personnel meeting this week if there are certain things related to personnel. That being said, I usually add my, like I just added an agenda item today, today to Dan's March Committee, right? I usually add it onto his agenda. But if the board would prefer, maybe that committee could instead just be education slash special education and we can spend, we could just delineate the agenda to have part ed, part special ed. Because that's what we do right now. Could we do a separate committee? We could, but then I would still probably need to attend some of the other ed committee meetings anyway.
I still like Courtney's idea. I, I like the idea of a separate special services committee.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with, I mean, like I said, years ago, we did. I, I think the problem is right now, as far as education, I understand what there's, there's items that, we have a lot of education items.
Yeah.
And then we have special, and things are kind of get grouped together and we lose some of the discussion. I, I, I don't have a problem. We can, we can adopt the committee and put committee members on it. I don't have a problem. It's just that now your, your Tuesdays are going to go a little bit. Like I've got to figure out, I'm going to, I have to figure out where to put people then. So it's just, you know, it, it would be another later.
I would probably, if it's at all possible, I don't know if I have a say in this, but I would probably suggest that it go back to back with education because sometimes I might have, Dan and I work closely together in some districts. They, they should say there may be more of a divide between the two parties. We try to really integrate together. So I would just suggest that the meetings go back to back so that if I needed to attend his or he comes to mind, that we can still have that partnership.
So it says special committee, right? Legislative, town, like, these are all technology, special committee, technology, we don't meet on Tuesday.
No, you could meet, you could meet on another day.
It could be on another day. It could be at a certain different time. It doesn't have to be on.
It really is up to the.
It's up to the board. It's a board committee. And then if we establish it, we'll then have to name community members and find a common time that everybody can meet. So it's up to you.
Well, it, it falls under special committees right now. You want it to be a standing committee or you want it to stay as a special committee?
Whatever you guys think. I just think that there is a need for that. That, that was my only input.
Going back to when there was special service committee, it had to do with like special, the Association of Special Families, Andy and the Abduls. And they met, they would meet with the director and a board member.
This was also prior to, I just want to give the board some history in the public because I have, I know our CPAC chair here and Miss Lockwood was, was served in that capacity. Prior to Alice Steinheimer, this Board of Education did not have a CPAC. So the CPAC was established because there was not a CPAC in place and the ASCF was kind of serving as one, but it didn't meet the standards of New Jersey Department of Ed. So the other thing I just want to preface to the board, and I have no problem meeting in a committee with the board, but you, you can't talk about litigious matters if that's a conversation. I can't talk about personnel matters. There's just certain pieces of it. So the CPAC was developed where we do usually have a board member. I know Kate has said it, I think Courtney's come, Claire attended the last one, where they can come to that CPAC and then we advise the parent group and the parents about programs, questioning, concerns, all of those factors are discussed. If we do a board one, which we, we can do, I would just say it wouldn't be with the Association for Special Children. A CPAC needs to run the way a CPAC runs. It would be strictly for the board about topics similar to what I put on education committee. The only difference would be it be in a separate meeting.
I, I wasn't, I'm saying that's what it was.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify because I just don't want it established where anyone has a misunderstanding.
But maybe what we need is we need a board representative on CPAC. I was thinking that, which then they could come back, like they.
So that's not a, I just want to preface, that's not though up to the board. So we have, I've always invited through CPAC, board representatives can attend. But that.
It is in our bylaw, right?
Not for CPAC.
It, it's just special services. It does not.
Not for CPAC, so I just want to clarify. Debbie would attend, so I, I always welcome board members to attend. I think you guys have the rule about you can't have more than four of you or whoever wants to attend. But you're always welcome to attend. We actually, Claire, thanks to. We actually, Claire, thanks to Claire, we have always had a CPAC where some districts run their CPAC closed forum. We do not have a closed forum. We always open it up to the public, so anybody can attend, board members, anyone.
Yeah, so CPAC's a parent group, not a board group, you know?
But we do meet with round, we have round tables, so.
I was thinking this more specifically with board members, like, uh, like, um, like, like our committee meetings, like our education.
So you want another committee of special services?
I, I think there, I think there's a need. I do think there's a need, and I think there's going to be more of a, a need, knowing that education is moving the way it's moving. I think that, like I said, we need to be thinking outside of the box, and more brains are, are better.
I, I, go ahead, Ray.
So if I'm understanding, so number eight, it says, uh, standing committees of the board. You're saying we should maybe add special services to number eight. I also see the policy's not un, under number eight. So that probably should be added to number eight, right?
Okay, so why don't we take this back, then?
To policy.
Committee, so that we get, that we add it where it needs to be added. And then we can have the reading again, and in committee, we could discuss exactly what you're talking about as where it should land.
We can, we can put this on the March policy agenda, committee agenda.
Yeah, does, does that work?
Yeah, that's fine. And like I said, I, I don't.
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't care where it lies. I just think it, there's a need. I think there's going to be a need going forward in the future. I think that we need to just be thinking outside the box as much as possible and collaborating as much as possible. That's all.
I, I guess I hear that there's a need, a need. Um, I just think special education and education do work so closely together that I think putting it together might serve better, because I, I don't know, it's just like, it, it is intertwined. We are trying to go into more of an inclusive environment in the district and offer more, you know, in, inclusivity. Um, there is a lot of special education in this district. It's in a lot of the schools, so I don't know. I think doing education and special education together might, you know, I think it definitely needs a bigger conversation for the board to, to discuss, but I think doing it together, that makes sense to me.
Okay. Well, why don't we bring it back to committee, and we can talk about it and see where it lands, but I understand where you're going, because there are, it seems like we're having, and of course, it, it's happening everywhere, because of the pandemic, unfortunately. Districts are, you know, it's, it's becoming an, an issue, and I can understand, we've, again, with teachers, we've lost a lot of special education teachers, and that's a lot of the conversation, too. I think that it's coming through, and I, I understand.
Yeah, and so, and that, maybe it needs to be with personnel, you know, like.
Maybe?
So that's what needs to be discussed, I guess.
Okay, so can we? Be table, table on?
So.
Okay.
We're reading it again. Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any other discussion under the policy committee? If not, roll call. Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yeah.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Minutes. Um, Parks and Recreation, Mike.
Just a couple of things. They've got, uh, they're still looking for volunteers to start an indoor floor hockey program. So if anybody's interested in that, contact the rec department. And Bubbling Springs registration's now open. And they're also looking for lifeguards, swim instructors, daycare counselors. Uh, contact the rec department for that, too, if anybody's interested. That's all I've got.
Thank you. See, the, the meeting was canceled while I was away, and they're, we're waiting to reschedule the meeting. Yes. Superintendent's roundtable.
So these minutes are from the January twenty-seventh meeting. Um, they're from, um, they're written by Kelly Stenciano, that one for resident, uh, president. Um, there was a question in regards to real-time, both the app, app, sorry, and the website login. So I guess, uh, Paris is saying that it isn't working, even after checking their settings. Um, so Mr. Winston suggested, um, them taking the real-time off, deleting it off their phone, and re-adding it, and seeing if that, um, you know, um, solves the glitch. Um, the website, there was a question also about the website, and the lag time, parent guardians change information in real-time. Sometimes the changes don't even reflect or save. And Dr. Anemoan said that the board office asked to approve those, so sometimes there's a lag time from the family requests. Um, there was a question about can reports be sent to parents for the middle and high school. Um, I think this was for Lincoln. And for the assessments, and, uh, Mr. Novak said that they would be sent out shortly, I think after this, uh, current benchmark. There was a question about PCTI transfers, if we get the money back. Um, and the answer was, yes, there is a number of enrollments agreed to before the school year starts, if a student transfers back, West Milford is only responsible for the time they were at PCTI and receives credit the next school year. There was a question about the test to stay plan. Um, if the districts, is there one, like other districts seem to be doing? If so, what does it entail? And then, uh, with the quarantine time being cut to five days, it no longer makes sense to be part of this plan. And now, you know, I think moving forward, the numbers are so low that it really wouldn't make sense. Uh, substitute working days, can substitutes still only work four consecutive days? If so, can anything be done? Allowing substitutes to work more than four consecutive days may alleviate some of the staffing challenges, and, uh, there are still permanent subs in each building. Non-permanent substitutes that may be needed for more than four consecutive days are determined on a case-by-case basis. There was a question about lunches. Uh, they seem to still not be consistent across schools. Um, all schools should have the same hot lunch alternative. Some schools may offer second alternatives, and those are based off what students seem to prefer and what the partic, uh, particular kitchen orders. Who plans the menu and decides the rotation? Um, Pomptonian was the answer, makes the menu and decides the rotation. And do some students are still not being allowed to get a school lunch if they bring something from home. And I know Dr. Anemoan said that he was gonna speak and, um, to the staff, and make sure that those kids, uh, those students were still getting a lunch if they wanted one. That everybody was entitled to a free lunch this school year. Question about quarantine communication, how long does it typically take for staff to make aware of students needing to quarantine? Uh, twenty-four-hour lag day for staff to get notification of students that are quarantined. And then also a question about the lag day, is a student marked absent or unex, uh, absent unexcused? The absence should be excused, and parents should reach out to the principal if it is marked unexcused. Most absences are unexcused, with the exception of a few instances which are outlined in the attendance policy. There's a meeting this Thursday, um, for the February meeting.
Thank you. State County School Boards and New Jersey School Boards, Mrs. Dwyer.
Um, I have nothing but the State County and New Jersey School Boards Association currently. I don't know if, uh, Kate, if you went into the governance board thing, that it was impossible to get into the site to, to do the play-off.
Mike?
I signed up.
Um, the New Jer, New Jersey School Boards Association, it was impossible to get into the site to do the governance training. Um, when we went in, we were able to look at it, but, and it said we were registered, but we, there was nothing, no other direction, nothing. So I contacted Kate, Kathy Heloa, and I'm waiting for an answer back from that. So that's all I have for that. Legislative, um, Kate couldn't, uh, couldn't do it. She called, emailed me. Um, Mrs. O'Brien said she would. Unfortunately, she's not here tonight, but she did forward her report to Mrs. Dwyer. Okay. Both houses of the legislature approved the delay of Governor Murphy's delivery of his budget speech by two weeks. Due to this delay, it's anticipated that Department of Education will be providing a revised budget calendar to school districts. The Senate approved S three fifty-four, establishing a school funding formula evaluation task force. This seven-member group is charged with studying, evaluating, and assessing the current state school funding formula. They will study the effectiveness of and provide recommendations on potentially improving various aspects of the formula. The task force will be holding a series of public hearings around the state to seek input and gather testimony on the effects of, um, the current school funding formula and potential areas for improvement within the formula from the public. The Senate approved S nine oh five, which extends the period of time for filing special education due process petitions related to COVID nineteen. The extension can be up to eighteen months, depending on the individual circumstances. This extra time is intended to provide parents time to work out new learning plans for their children with school districts without having to file for a hearing with the state's Office of Administrative Law. Also to note, the Assembly, at the Assembly of Agriculture and Food Security Committee, advanced bills aimed to expand public awareness and student eligibility for school meal programs. A two-three-sixty-five pertains to educate parents and guardians about existing and expanding school meals programs options. A two-three-sixty-eight requires schools to provide free lunch, breakfast, and lunches to students from working-class, middle-income families designated as the Working Class Families Anti-Hunger Act. AC one zero nine urges the US Congress to pass the Universal School Meals Program Act of two thousand twenty-one, which would provide free breakfast, lunch, dinner, and snack to all schoolchildren regardless of socioeconomic backgrounds. This legis, legislation also eliminates school food debt and reimburses school for all delinquent meal debt. And that's Mrs. O'Brien's report, um, on that s. Can I just, can I say something? On that school funding formula, um, if there are gonna be public hearings, I think this school board must be involved in those because we are very affected by this, and we're gonna get hurt this year. So I think we need to maybe get a bunch of people and, and go down there and voice our concerns, so that's it. Thank you. Ray?
So that's seven-person panel. Uh, did, did they release the school funding formula to the, to the, I like? I think I know the answer, but.
Do they release it?
Yeah, do we know what the school funding formula is, or they just give us a number?
No, they just give you the number. They give, they give you, they give you what comprises of it, but try to follow the thought is a little difficult.
Yeah. So it hasn't changed, is what I'm hearing?
Well, you know, it's based upon student enrollment, and it's based upon averages, and it's based upon your socioeconomics of your community also. So, um, and that comes from, you know, state taxes, so there's a lot of information that they get down and threaten, that they, um, extrapolate from different areas in order to create what they think is a fair funding formula. So you have to look around at your socioeconomics and, um, you know, that's, that's part of it. All right, Willie?
I think the first.
I think the frustrating part for West Milford, right, and a lot of the towns that are in the islands, is you don't have that tax base from business, right, because all the land is protected. That, that hurts. That hurts.
That's why we need to.
And, and we've seen that year after year in, in multiple school districts like us and Jefferson and others that seem to get money caught, and others flourish.
You know, I, I think the reason why we're getting hurt right now is because they feel that, they feel that we, we've gotten money, um, in the ten years prior that we weren't entitled to, and, um, you know, but they, they chose to freeze it, and now we're paying the penalty for it, but it's just, um, it's not fair. It's really just not fair. And, you know, they're using a formula that was created a long time ago, and they really haven't done anything to update it, except, you know, for the last few years, and that's based on a moment. And, um, there's been a lot of additional mandates that they've placed on us, but those mandates don't go into the formula when they're figuring it out. You know, we, for a while, they gave us some additional money for Park when they first implemented Park. And, you know, they, they would give us some money for, um, other little projects that they would fund for a year or two, but that's all gone by the wayside, so, you know, we just have to hold our breath and see what happens on March tenth. Okay, Ray, technology?
So, um, I was not able to attend at the last minute. I know Alex said, um, Rob is working on the minutes to the meeting, but I don't think that they're completed yet, but maybe Dan or Alex, you've got an update from that meeting with regard to the website and?
So we discussed the website, um, committee where we are. You know, parents are helping out, staff's helping out, that's why we, uh, made a recommendation to add those hours that were just approved. Uh, the bulk of the meeting was to go over that, although we also did discuss the status of some projects in the district. Uh, phones, I believe, we discussed on that for a little while, uh, so that's moving along. Trying to think what else was on the agenda.
Quick card.
What was that?
Class link, quick card.
Oh, yes. You wanna touch on that? That was a good one.
Yes, actually, that was me, especially, that's right.
Um, class link, as, as you all know, is the, um, we talked about it, it's a single sign-on, so our students across the district, they don't have to remember their password for everything in the world, they log in once, and they are automatically logged into all of our district resources. This makes that process even easier for our youngest students in K two. They can get a QR code on a lanyard, and then the program, the, the Chromebook for those students will be programmed to, when it opens up, it'll have the, uh, camera feature ready to read the code, and it'll automatically log those students in uh, with that QR code. So there is value for students being able to know their username and their password for it. Um, however, at those ages, it takes an enormous amount of time just to log into that one thing. That got through class link, because it, it would take them forever to log into everything. Um, but now this really streamlines that process for our, uh, K through two students to get into the Chromebook and, and get into everything, so. Uh, it was a good development. I think you believe it was, it was piloted here at the Westbrook School, and they found it to be successful, so we're gonna do it in, uh, all of our elementary schools.
Okay, uh, Township and Board of Education Committee, Harry, you wanna take that one?
We, we have that.
Uh, West Milford. We did have a meeting. We, we met with the, we met on a Zoom meeting.
Yeah, but there was nothing, um, I'm trying to, yeah, that was.
Discussing a part of a meeting, I believe.
Yeah, it was discussed at the.
Oh, okay. Good, we haven't met since then.
We haven't discussed it.
Uh, West Milford Municipal Alliance. Um, you meet last?
I went to it. They, they did a survey for their members. That wasn't really, you know, doesn't apply to us. Um, they talked about some of the different programs, um, that they've gotten grants for to help fund our, our the programs that are running in our schools, such as Heroes and Cool Kids, the LEED program, We're Not Buying It. Um, they're very interested in hitting more of the community and doing more town-wide and community um, programs and activities, so I just want to say I don't think they will be funding those programs next year um, for us, because they're much more interested in, in reaching the community as a whole and not just going into our schools. If they get more grants, then maybe they will, but, um, something that was discussed.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, old business. Anyone have? Uh, old business. Anyone have anything for old business? Kate, Ray?
I have two things for old business. Um, the first is all the way back to November of two thousand and nineteen. I rewatched that meeting today. Um, November nineteenth of two thousand and nineteen, where I asked the board and many of you were not there at that time to look in, or I asked the administration and the board to look into a utilization study. At that time I had asked how long would it take and how much would it cost? There was a lot of discussion at that meeting about, I believe most of the board members, it seemed as if they were concerned that it was going to affect moving the sixth grade to Macapin. We are now far beyond moving the sixth grade to Macapin and so I am now bringing up the idea of a utilization study again. And now I would like to add to it an enrollment projection. I think we need to look into these two. Um, I did go to some websites of the companies that do these to see, I found that we, our, we are on the client list of, you know, one particular company. So I know we've done it in the past because we're on their client list on their website. However, not in my time on this board. So I don't know when the last time we've done a study. I don't know how long these two studies take. I don't know how much these two studies cost. Um, but I think it's now time to start talking about these things again.
Okay, Ray is next and then I'll come.
Cool.
You're asking.
So first off, I happen to agree with that, yes.
Yeah, I do too. Wonderful.
So, um, the other piece, again, right, because we're going into budget season for next year, I don't want us to lose sight of, we've done some good work over the years uh, on various things for, um, students from an extracurricular perspective. I don't want us to lose sight of, you know, making sure that we work through the next few years to, to make sure Kill Galen Field gets fixed the right way. Uh, and I, and I probably sound like a broken record, but I'm going to keep bringing it up. You know, I've, I've heard that, you know, there might be discussion that maybe we're not putting, going to put grass on the infield, but I think that that's an important piece of what we, what we need to do and we need to make sure that we do everything we can to, to get that in the budget and, and obviously with the other drainage issues that we have to work through. So again, this is stuff that's going to take the, the course of probably two or three, you know, budget seasons, but I, I think we can get that field back to the way it was. Maybe get rid of some of that fencing so you don't have to look through four layers of fencing to watch a baseball game. Um, simple things like that. I think there's some low hanging fruit that we can get too. And I'm sure that the outside leagues, the travel leagues and Little League, I'm sure they would be willing to, um, work to help with some of those things too, right? If, if there, there are some of the right things and, and positive things, they're the ones that are going to use, right? We use this field three months out of the year. They're the ones that are using it at nights and on weekends. So, right, if they need to replace lights, I'm sure that they will replace lights. Um, but we, I think, we, we need to put parameters around that with regard to care and maintenance of the field also. Because we don't want people that don't know how to take care of a field taking care of a field either. Um, because it does lead to some things that, right, we've discussed before, like bad lips and so forth. So, um, let's just make sure that we keep that, you know, top of mind as we go through this budget.
I think that's another conversation in when we're, we're going through the budget. Our network, what's our first budget meeting, Barbara? First meeting where we're going to be talking about different items on? Well, we discussed the budget in the last committee meeting. Okay. Budget will be discussed at committee in March now that we won't have our state, state aid. Um. But the twenty second is the first meeting where we're going to have numbers?
That, that's a preliminary budget here. We'll have.
Yeah, I'm not going to have numbers until March tenth. So at least, at least your next budget committee meeting will have something of substance to talk about because if it, if I was going to get state aid numbers this week, the committee meeting was going to be after, after, well, you would have had something to speak about March right before the, um, ten to the budget. I guess it falls on the March fifteenth committee meeting? Yeah. For the first, for the next discussion about that, Ray? Yeah, we're really not going to have anything of substance, substance to talk about prior to the March tenth. Except we'll be speculating. All right. Well, by the fifteenth then we'll have numbers and we'll be able to talk. Courtney?
I think, um, the utili- utilization study is a great idea for so many aspects, um, besides enrollment, um, busing, you know, we have a busing situation going on. I know that a lot of school districts are doing utilization studies and looking at their enrollment over the next five years. How they even figure that out, I don't even know, but it, that's bigger than what you do, Barbara. You know, like, that's why we have.
We had one done a few years ago.
Okay, but it, I think that the board is asking that it's done again because we have some bigger things to look at. The busing we've talked about, you know, the, there's reruns of busing. There's things that we can really use with the company, utilization company. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, um, Ray was mentioning the field and working with Little League. I, I just, you know, thinking outside of the box here, why doesn't a board member go to some of the Little League meetings that they have? Why doesn't? You go to.
Oh, 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 you can't.
I was going to say, I think that's a little different. So Little League, football, all those sports have meetings monthly. So if a board member were to go and say, listen, we want to work with you and be like we do with the municipal alliance, we sit in, if they would welcome us, I think it would be something that we should look at.
We, we, yeah. I mean, we could send a letter, but we have to remember that whoever goes, we have, we have to, you know, we have to.
We're a board member.
Yeah, but they have to remember that they're going to hear but not commit.
Perfect. And like.
You know, but I, I would say we have to send.
I think it can be done on all, I, but I think it could be done with all the organizations. There's definitely one for lacrosse. There's definitely one for football. There's softball, there's baseball. There, I mean, we, it shouldn't just be Mike. It should, he should be making an effort to reach all of these organizations to be working with them more in hand.
What's Barbara saying? Any show?
I, I mean, I don't know how we would do that.
Yeah, I don't know if they're open meetings.
Yeah, like, it would be up to them to probably invite us in.
Yeah. But. Any member of the public's entitled to go to the Little League meeting?
Yes, so I could say Little League, that's true.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't, I don't know about.
They, they have a board, they go by Robert rules.
We also have five, more than five parents on this board who are parents, but also board members. I think we should be utilizing that dual.
Oh, I, I would think if you're going, I would hope that you, you are as a.
But I, I'm asking that we go and, and not speak as a parent. I mean, I think sometimes as board members, we have two different roles. We're going as a parent, as a Little League parent, or we're going as a board member. I'm asking that we ask these organizations to go as a board member to ask for help.
Do you want us to write a letter to them asking them to appoint us to their?
No, no, just invite us.
I'm just invited. You want to?
I don't hurt that.
No, I, I don't have a problem with that. I, I, I mean, if you, if you're going anyway, I guess you can go and hear what they have to say. I don't know what you can commit to. I mean, uh.
Any problem with that?
No, I think that you can go it. The issue is when you go, you, as a board representative, you have to get parameters from the board for whatever. I think that discussion needs to be had first in terms of what is you're looking to do with them.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm always open to working with the community. I just don't know how we would go about it as far as you, you, what, we can't commit to anything to anybody as a board member. So you're going there basically as Mike goes direct now, right? You're going there, you're listening. You can't really say to them, oh, the board is to, so, I mean, if, if you're, if you know people that are on these committees, maybe we could reach out and, you know, I think I, I understand what you're saying because unfortunately in West Milford, all the recreation doesn't fall under the Department of Recreation. We don't have, I mean, the only ones that fall under the Department of Recreation are like soccer and basketball. So it's like every group has their.
Say it again. What's about soccer?
They're all separated.
They are.
Football soccer is a separate entity, Little League is a separate entity, basketball, softball, they're all separate.
No.
But so just some background, right? They all became separate entities because none of these organizations wanted commingle funds. And that's what the township does. They commingle funds. So if Jase was soccer and they raised thirty thousand dollars and then a lacrosse program starts in town, they commingle those funds. Yes, they do, Barbara.
But that, they should have dedicated funds for each program, just like we would get.
I hear what you're saying. They could have dedicated funds. However, if they need money for something else, they can take it from one program to another. And I know that because I took the wrestling program many years ago out of Parks and Rec because that's what happened.
Well, we, I mean, essentially any board would do the same thing. For instance, if I come up with a silly example, we rent out our auditorium to, or we rent out our gym to cheerleading, you know, competitions and we rent out our, you know, to dance competitions or whatever. The money they pay us to use our gym, do we use that to only replace the light bulbs in the gym? No, that goes into our regular general fund. It's like the same thing, really, you know?
But part of that money is to pay custodial.
Of course.
Electric, of course, stuff like that. But it's a revenue that we're anticipating that we get. And if we don't get that revenue, then that revenue line is in deficit. But it's just a culmination of a revenue whereas when you run, because I'm on my recreation committee in my community, you run different programs and each program has its own dedicated fund so that you can determine whether it's stolen or not. And it would pay your expenses from that dedicated fund for, so when you, when you have registrations, the registration money would go into that and you would pay your, if you're, if you're going to provide supplies or if you're going to provide, you know, your instructor, those, that money would come out of that particular fund.
Yeah.
But that could be something with the chart, the charter. That, that's. I, what Ray is saying, I do remember going back years ago. That's why all broke away. I mean, that's why they all broke away is because they want, was all, they wanted to rule, they wanted to control the money that, that, that they raised, which, you know, makes sense, but. So, I mean, I, I don't have a problem if there's a list you want to get and we can send a letter and ask them if they would like us to attend their meetings and see what they say.
I mean, it's really not, it's not going to, the benefit for them is that they use these fields, right? The benefit for them is that we use these fields. Like, that's the common ground that.
I'm just saying if they want you there because there are some groups that might say, well, you know, I don't have a few, if, if we can get a list together, I, I, for Barbara could reach out, send a letter out. I'd have to find out from Recreation if they have. Yeah, maybe that. Something like that.
You could get that, Mike.
Oh, Mike, Mike, can you take care of that? Get us a list and then we'll work from there. We could talk about it and. Committee. Committee. Is there anything else on their old business?
If there's something on this current agenda, is it new business or old? Doesn't matter, Ray?
I don't think it matters.
All right, then I have one more thing under old business. Uh, under education tonight, we approved that this is the month of music in our schools and art, youth art month. We've had no comments on it and, um, I just want to say that I am so incredibly thankful for music and art in our schools and our teachers and that our students have these opportunities. But I'd like to tell you about one specific night, not just as a board member, but also as a parent. This year's Macapin Winter Concert was by far the most amazing event I have ever attended. Sorry, I get emotional. It was really that good and I'm not even joking. Our seventh grade students got to learn a song in sign language in an entirely different language, is really what that means, and share it. And it was top notch. Not only was the singing, the song, the way that their gloves, the whole entire thing was breathtaking, but this was inclusion at its best. That's why I get emotional because our teacher and our, and our, um, staff member that helped to teach our students worked so hard and you can tell. And then the kids worked so hard to learn this and put so much time and energy in for full inclusion and present this. Signing a song doesn't happen, um, word for word normally. If you know about sign language and. And not necessarily word for word assigned. So I know that this took an incredible amount of time and energy from our staff. As a parent, I cannot express how grateful I am that my child got to witness his peers in this, um, in this event, that they got to sing through sign. And I just wanted to share that with the board and the community on how proud I am of West Milford for that.
It wa- it was a wonderful concert. I agree with you.
Thank you.
We have a wonderful music staff. We, we that, we have people who want to come here for, and we hear about so much. And we need to be very thankful for the dedication of our, our, our music and art department because they are in special education. And they're special education too. They are hands down. We, we have a good, a wonderful group of people here. Um, any other old business? Uh, I need a motion to close all business. All those in favor?
New business? Courtney?
Um, so we have a, uh, want to talk about culture and mental health tonight. Um, and I, I'm wondering about, um, what we're doing to get our children off of the screens and off of the Chromebook and more engaged in paper activities. Um, so I'm wondering how that's being directed to our teachers. Um, being an elementary teacher myself, I know I took the initiative to say pretty much I didn't want to use Chromebooks. I wanted, um, my students to get their pencils, holding their pencils correctly, writing correctly, having some time to even teach cursive, which is in nobody's classroom anymore. We talked a lot about, you know.
It isn't.
It is. And we talked a lot about, um, you know, just being a little bit more, um, self-aware and self-conscious tonight. And I'm wondering, are we, is there a directive to our teachers that's being passed down to our students so that they're not on the screen as much as they were last year?
There's been more directives to this point. Uh, we've been speaking about it. We started this discussion, um, over the summer about, um, you know, that pendulum, this swing one way to the other. We went from wanting, you know, pre-pandemic, wanting more technology to all of a sudden, now we got too much thing now. So, um, we're, we are trying to find that balance. I think we are, um, on the right track in our elementary schools, getting back to, you know, some, some pre-pandemic, you know, group work and, you know, we're, we've never abandoned our, our cursive program. You know, we, we do share and talk about the, uh, especially with the reading consultant about the connection of, you know, um, the brain research connecting, we like talking handwriting. I mean, that's, that's significant, you know, so we haven't, um, changed our ways in that. Um, we see a need in our, um, secondary program, our six through twelve, to back away a little bit from, uh, from the Chromebooks. So those are work, those are, those are discussions that we, we had most recently um, at our admin council meeting, I believe this month, um, about, you know.
We're trying to get the tone across of returns of normalcy as, as best we can. So that is on our list of, of items for discussion in our returns of normalcy, you know, with, um, you know, the mask optional mandate coming, the return of reading carpets into the classrooms, the ability to do small group work, the building for our reading specialist to have three kids at a reading table. Like, these are all bits and pieces of, of returns of normalcy. Um, that is a topic that has been at our department meetings. Um, we're, you know, we're looking at the use of technology in our secondary program. Uh, we did have a presenter today, um, for, um, science and math that spoke about assessment and, um, the different types. that spoke about assessment and um, the different types of assessment that were not just using, you know, not transitioning everything into link it, you know, so we're making sure that we're not overusing that, that resource. Um, I know that there's been a big tone of our um, conquer math consultation, you know, that she would, you know, the, the recommendation that our current teachers who are in that program would, would say they're getting out of that is that she would say, never use the Chromebook ever for, for math, you know, that's, that's the tone that we're getting in our grades three and four at the moment. And uh, in our, in our plan, in my um, uh, professional development plan for next year, we have a lot more grades, you know, grades two, five, algebra and geometry will be entering year one, while our three and four teachers enter year two, and a, and a big piece of that is back to paper and pencil and, and, you know, hands-on math.
So I think I'm gonna ask that in education committee, um, it is discussed things like um, problem-based learning, Mrs. Romeo brought up numerous times, how we can collaborate and do projects across the curriculum on science, math, writing and art, to have more STEAM days, make it STEMI Fridays, where the whole district is doing STEAM projects. Children, and that's coming from you as a director, I would do like to see that, totally toward company in our school, across page through block.
I do, I, I agree with you, I just think it's something I've been reading about over this last month or so, in a lot of districts, in, in, in wasting these Chromebooks and getting them back to where they used to be, and that's about, that's.
It's just a balance of, you put a one million dollars on about to get one, you know, we just have to set one to where it's about.
Yep. And, uh, hey, I just have a question, I need some clarification really. I'm a liaison for the WMMA, for the board, and what exactly does that mean? Um, that, does that mean that I go, listen to the meeting, take notes and come back and just report to you? Does that mean that I'm allowed to be a member of the WMMA? Um, does that mean that I'm allowed to vote on what they're doing in our community or their agenda items? Um, so I just want clarification on what exactly it means for me. I, I think with the, the alliance, if, and it could have changed, but it used to be you had to be appointed, I don't know, you, anybody can attend them. But you had to be an appointed member by the council in order to vote.
You do. Um, as far as us, you're going near to here, I mean, you can always give some input, you just can't promise, you know, it's just like anything else, it's a nine-member board, so you can't commit to things, but of course you can, you know.
I mean, if I compare it to, to like other meetings that I attend for the school center, I'm a PTA member, I'm a, I can vote on the PTA. I can be a member on that. I can be, but I'm not coming back and reporting that to you. So you're sending me as a liaison. I, I get that you have to be appointed from the council, I'm not asking that. I'm asking for this board. Am I, I guess essentially I'm asking, am I a member of the WMMA or can I be a member of the WMMA if I choose to?
You're, you're not a member, you're, you're just a liaison that they have, you know.
Appointed by them is not at all what I'm asking. I could get appointed, they would love to have more people that vote on.
I, I know, but that's, that's.
I know, I'm just, I'm just.
I, having, I, I, I did that. And having been appointed, it did make a difference because we had like ten members that were appointed and there were twenty-five people coming. So only the ten members that were appointed were able to vote. But I think it also goes to their priorities and how they run their meetings.
Yeah, I'm not asking about theirs, I'm only asking about ours.
Yeah, and, and I.
I, I, it would also cause a conflict sometimes, like if you were approving a program.
I'm just asking what I've never been, can I do both?
That's what I think are yours, can you do both?
Am I allowed to do both?
So, so, I know that when I was um, a member, right, an appointed member of the Parks and Rec Committee, and I became, right, I ran for board and I became a board member, I had to come off of the Parks and Rec Committee. Right, and Jay was on the Parks and Rec Committee at the time, so. So I had to do that in Parks and Rec, I'm, I don't know if that is the same, but it's run by the same group, so.
Mr. Warren is right, I think you need to check with the MMA to see what their rules are. And even if they let you become a member, you may have a problem in terms of what you can and can't participate in. I've heard you have potential conflicts between your membership of the board and your membership on that, from that group. And that would work both ways. So it could put you in an untenable situation, potentially.
Any other new business? If not, I need a motion.
Oh, oh, wait, I do, I have something.
Why?
I just remember, nobody ever mentioned when the arts and music festival was, and it's March thirtieth. So, okay, I, I, I meant to say something before, I just.
Don't count on it, thank you.
It's my age, thank you, have a good. I, 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 I need a motion to close new business.
Motion to close new business.
Second, Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, uh, public comment. Now, uh, this portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and or directly related to the operation of the West Milford School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of thirty minutes and then time permitting, other public comment will be, uh, I'm sorry, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the thirty-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and response will be forthcoming when, when appro, if and when appropriate. The board asks that the members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in the light of the legal rights of those affected and identified in their comment. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak?
Monica Church, uh, forty Beach Haven wrote, I just wanted to comment real quick on the website committee. I'm a parent on that committee, and we've only had one meeting so far, so I just wanted, there was a long discussion about, so I just wanna convey what I've seen so far. Um, the research that the teachers did was very, very thorough. We saw a spreadsheet of schools that the teachers had researched, uh, multiple sites all across the country. There was a list of pros and cons and they wrote long paragraphs for each, and they had made their consensus of what they liked best. Um, I'm married, my husband is also on the committee and he's a programmer, he's built websites, so I'm a little biased and I've heard him complain for years about what's a good website and what's not. And he did comment, and this might be why the other six hours are gonna be needed and maybe even more time, is the old website is so obsolete, there's no mapping, I might be saying this completely wrong, but it's gonna be a lot of manual work to go into to decide what should be kept on the, from the old website, literally clicking and clicking and clicking, so I'm assuming the teachers are gonna be doing that. Um, and then once the new website is up and running, again, there might be more time needed just to make sure it's, it's conveyed correctly and everything. So um, just again, from being married to a programmer, there is a lot that goes into that website. And a company is gonna come in and hopefully do most of the work, but obviously, um, they just need that input, so I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, my. Anyone else wishing to speak on their public comment?
Tina, I'd like to close public comments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, executive session.
At nine twenty, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for a purpose of discussing personal appointments, resignations.
The only thing we're talking about today, current litigation and negotiations.
We're discussing current litigation matters, negotiations and HIPS.
And special ed.
And special education matters, which are matters of attorney-client privilege. Uh, the executive session minutes will not be released until such time as privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable, and we will come back for action.
Hey, I need a second. I need a second. Courtney? All those in favor? How long will we be out? Do we have a few things?
Yeah.
Forty minutes?
Forty minutes is good.
All those in favor?
I agree with you.
Aye, okay. I'd like to pull the meeting back to order. Um, Mrs. Francisco, could you take roll call, please?
Sure. Um, Mr. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Here.
Mrs. Stillman?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Marino?
Here.
Lockwood?
Here.
Mr. Conlin?
Here.
Miss, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Conlin.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Dwyer? Okay, for the HIPS, I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent on the following um, HIPS. Two thousand twenty-two H four as unsubstantiated, two thousand twenty-two H five as substantiated, and two thousand twenty-two M eight as unsubstantiated. I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call? Mrs. Dwyer? Yes. Mrs. Stevenson?
Yeah.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yeah.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer, will you do negotiations, please? Okay, I move to approve the following agenda. Um, item number one, do I have to read it?
No.
No, okay, we had them out. Okay, so I move to approve item number one. I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yeah.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Nine fifty-five, I'd like to make a motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.